Hi, second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, consent by us. Item five passed. So we're going to item six.
Did you vote in favor or hate it?
I did.
You did? Sure. Moving on to item six, new business. All management of this new business will be discussed and considered separately. So, item A, discuss, consider and act on a joint ordinance and boundary agreement between the city of Fort Worth and the city of New Fairview releasing approximately 179.779 acres of property from the ETJ of the city of Fort Worth and accepting said 179.779 acres into the ETJ of the city of New Fairview.
So is it?
I've seen the map, but it doesn't.
Correct. I'll call sure it is. Ben, are you up here? I don't, with all my masks, I can't tell. I thought Ben was gonna be here. This is the final phases of the Paloma Ranch estate. So, Dove Hall, which changed its name to Paloma Ranch, is basically this part right here. That was already an ETJ release and an annexation into the city limits that occurred in June-July timeframe 2020. This has been under discussion since that timeframe. We've been working with the city of Fort Worth. They have now taken action and released the balance of this project from their ETJ. And they've completed a joint resolution or joint ordinance which gives the ETJ to the city of New Fairview to accept.
Is that Dove Hall Road on the north end of the big yellow line?
Yeah, that's been Dove Hall.
Okay.
So, what this is, is basically taking to conclusion what was started, you know, about a year ago when this project was presented with the council and bringing that into the ETJ. And then they'll be making a petition for annexation for the rest of that process, for that project, into the city limits of New Fairview.
So we have any discussion on this?
I make a motion to re-accept this as written.
So before we do this, we've got an item, let's go ahead and postpone this. We've got an item here related to economic development with Paloma Ranch. So I want you guys to hear what that is before you make that decision.
I have a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
What, if any, is the planning and zoning gonna have over all of this? And why is this not being presented when they're in place and that's up and running?
So the planning and zoning commission was reinstated with a starting date or effective date in June, I believe. So we're gonna be.
So should some of this not wait until that's in place?
So this has already been plotted and already been presented to the council, the concept plan, the whole thing. It's been heard about a year ago.
Through the old council.
Through the old council. That's correct. So if you guys want to postpone this, it can be postponed until June. That's gonna put some pressure on the developer in regards to what they're looking at doing. But again, I'd like for you guys to hear what we've discussed before we take any action now.
Okay.
Okay?
Those are gonna be one acre lots, correct?
Yes. So everything you're seeing right here, this portion of it, has already been approved by the current council. And this is actually gonna hold on one acre lots. We're anticipating that they start going building permits in the next two weeks is what they've been telling us.
I just wanna speak to the process of this. So this is an agreement between Fort Worth and New Fairview. And the only thing it's gonna affect is the status of this property and whose ETJ it's in.
Correct.
Right? Later, there'll have to be a petition for annexation. At that time, there'll be a zoning request that's submitted in the council or the P&amp;Z at that point. Whoever's available will have discretion at that point to consider the zoning of the property and to handle it as you see fit at that time. This really is just about, is it gonna be Fort Worth ETJ or your ETJ? And that will set it up for the next step of the process.
So is somebody making a presentation on this?
Well, I thought Ben would be in here for it, but ultimately, you know, from the standpoint of what we're requesting today, we're requesting for you to accept the release of the ETJ from the city of Fort Worth and accept it into the city of New Fairview's ETJ. You know, this is just the next step in that project that has been ongoing for almost two years with the city of New Fairview.
Okay.
And where was that discussion ready to be approved?
That's been going to the executive session, I guess.
Okay.
Well, you're asking us to vote on something before we discuss.
You're not voting on it right now, but we're gonna.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we are actually going to jump to item I, because I believe we have someone that's going to talk about this a little bit.
Yeah.
And this is going to be discuss, consider and act on a resolution of the city council of the city of New Fairview, Texas, authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Development Lot Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture, the Community Development Fund, and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to act as the city's executive officers and authorized representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Lot Grant Program. And I believe we have Wesley here?
So Wesley is with Trailer and Associates. They were picked by the city council to act as our administrator in the readiness application for the grant. And he's got some information to share with you about the next step in that process as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ben and Mayor Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Wesley Trailer with Trailer and Associates. We're here helping the city with the grant application for a community development block grant for the city. Community development block grant is through the housing and urban development agency. Those funds are then dulled down to the Texas Department of Agriculture. And so that is the actual agency in which the city will be applying for those funding. Right now, there's $350,000 available from that set of funds in this round. What we've identified in this application round for the city and helped city staff and council came through a public hearing that was called a couple of months ago, was street improvements and the whole top situation. We've been conducting surveys for that neighborhood because one of the components of this grant is made, I know you don't have all night. One of the components is that 51% of the beneficiaries must be low in moderate income in order for the city to receive these funds and make sure that those projects are benefiting those citizens. That's kind of a hot wall, a firework. It's part of this grant if the city was. Like I said, we've identified that neighborhood at this one time. We're almost done surveying. I think we've got maybe 10 houses left to get a good response from. At that point in time, we'll have all the surveys complete and really narrow it down which streets in that neighborhood will be submitted in that application. That's kind of the point that we're at right now. Our next step is obviously to finish up those maps, finish up and kind of tidy up that project. We have a lot of different estimates. There's a packet for you this evening. I've kind of tossed around quite a few different scenarios in conjunction with the engineering on this project. Plenty of opportunities with the city to improve the streets in that neighborhood. We think that's gonna be our best bet. There are better things. It's more like assistance and that project is needed most. This time, I love any questions and whatever concerns we have.
So that grant is only for streets?
The grant is not just for streets. The activity that we're choosing in this application is for streets alone. There's water projects, indoor projects. The list kind of goes along and on. But right now, this application is for streets.
Is this the fund that we paid the $350,000 to? The ETJ and all that on the road?
Trailer and Associates only gets paid if we're successful in receiving the grant. So, related to this process, the one for the grant application.
Correct. So if we, this is asking that we allow the mayor and city administrator to act as the city's executive officers and authorized representatives? Wow, wow.
So with every single grant application we do, there's gonna be a sort of process to it. That's all gonna start with submitting the application. There's gonna be certain folks that have to sign off on the electronic submission of the application this year. This is the first time they've done electronic submission in the Texas Department of Agriculture. There are different folks with the city that have to sign off on those. And the state agency really asked if we identified who those individuals are to kind of make some things off and make sure the designated folks or other ones that make those calls make a decision to make the communication with the Texas Department of Agriculture. The commissioner himself likes to call cities whenever they get in order. He's got an announcement for them, so he kind of likes to know who he needs to reach out to if he makes a call to you.
Is this, go ahead. With that money, that 350K, what quality of road will be going in? Is it, I mean, they're gonna do a good road this last 20 years? Is it gonna be a road that falls apart?
I can't take that much. It's gonna meet our technical standards by the time. So it's gonna be the same quality of road that we'd be putting in or if required developer put in the appropriate setting.
So is it asphalt or concrete?
It'll be, most likely, the asphalt to be consistent with what's in the neighborhood already.
But it could be chip steel, right? You totally vote with the chip steel?
If you wanna go to chip steel, that's an option at the council if you get products.
Well, you can do 10 times the roads with chip steel. Chip steel falls apart in your equipment.
It's not as simple as what you're describing. The problem we have out there with the road is the base has been damaged. It needs to be repaired. That's probably the most expensive part of the process. We have to fix the drainage issues and stormwater drainage issues that are out there as well. That's gonna be a sizable part of the project. So if you went out there and did what you're saying, chip sealing it, you're throwing money away. I mean, essentially, you're gonna get a few years of improved driving on it and then you'll be back where you are now.
So if it's good enough for the county and the state, why is it not good enough in the city of New Fairview?
So if you look at the county, FM 407 was chip sealed recently. Especially if you go to the county line to Davenport County, that was chip sealed. It's chip sealed on asphalt. It's what it's using it for is to create another moisture barrier to keep the base of the road and the road maintained. Chip seal in and of itself is not a great product, especially when you're talking about putting a trash truck out there on it and you're talking about other types of heavy equipment that are gonna be on it, which we're going to have.
So these are roads that we're gonna, that we're focusing to spend $350,000, $350,000 that will fall apart.
If you look at this, this kind of gives you an idea of what the estimates are for the different sections of the road.
Yeah, but that's more than half a million dollars.
Well, yeah, but if you look at this, this is, you know, Morgan Drive, $92,000.
Okay.
If you're looking at Wilson Court.
That includes the road and all the drainage to make sure that it doesn't fall apart?
Yeah, so we're working on the drainage study still right now to figure out whether that has to happen. But this is an estimate of what that would look like.
So which roads would that $350,000 go toward?
We won't know that until we complete the surveys and identify the eligible locations.
How long's this survey been going on? Because this, weren't they being given this $350,000 a year ago?
No, we started this process shortly after I got here. So we've been doing this for about probably five months. You can talk about the process and the timing of these types of programs in general and what the, kind of what that looks like.
Yeah, sure thing. So the announcement of the program, it took the state a little bit longer than it usually does for these announcing programs. In conjunction with getting their website or their online portal for the application for that process to go live. We've heard a lot of different reasons for the delay in getting the website out and releasing the application guidelines and getting them out there to us. As far as it relates to the survey for this area, that's a process where you're going to go and knock on doors and you're gonna try and reach people. And they say they use seven or eight different attempts to reach those people when they're actually home or reach those people when they actually feel like answering the door. Because I know when I'm at home and someone knocks on my door, if I don't know them, I don't always answer them, especially if I'm on the phone or if I was involved with clients or something like that. I'm not as ready to give answers to them. So it does take a few attempts and trying to reach as many folks as we can so that we can.
So if you go to somebody's house, they're not there, do you leave a card, flyer, or something?
Yeah, we're leaving a drop-in card and following up with them.
And where would you like to find them?
Yeah, we've called everybody in the entire neighborhood multiple times, what was it else? And we did not need the minimum numbers that we needed. So we have Josh going out and knocking on doors. You know, we were 50 surveys short when Josh started knocking on doors and we're now 10 surveys short. So we're gonna shoot to get out there and get another 20 surveys just so that we can throw some of these surveys out to get a little bit of hedge. But we're in a good spot right now.
We have a question.
I just have a quick question on the survey. Is the survey allowed in certain areas of the city? Because we have seen surveys out on our road. Our roads are just as bad. It's like off the hill across out there.
Yeah, so we actually have reached out, this has been in all of the newsletters that have been sent out for the last four or five months. It's been on the homepage of our website, asking for people to participate. We put it out through social media as well, asking for people to participate. So we have surveys from other parts of this community, but we do not have the resources to go out there and knock on every single door in the city. So we're focusing our efforts where we feel that we might be able to be most successful in having the density necessary to get the number of surveys that we need to be able to be successful in the application.
So the survey is on the website, on the city website?
It is. And we've also had printed copies in here that if you guys wanna fill that out or take some with you for your neighbor, you're more than welcome to grab it on your way out.
It doesn't really explain the survey as I said, it's not on the website today. It's, there's just a link to the survey. So there's nothing that would prompt something.
Maybe that's why they won't answer.
Well, it could also be that we've got a council member that has told their survey for five months to not take the survey. And in addition to that, in the surveys that we've had, that we've sent out to people, the newsletters, are you signed up for our newsletters?
I am.
Okay, so if you look at that, there's a lot of explanation on it. And then also on the page, there is a page that describes exactly what it is. It gives you resources to the Texas Department of Agriculture's website for this grant program. And it gives you a whole bunch of additional reading. I can show you where that is on the website as well.
I was just operating up the suggestion.
Oh, no, no, I get it. I can help you find where that information is though.
Thank you.
So is this authorization one time for this block grant or is it ongoing?
So this is just the authorization to put together an application and then submit that application to the Texas Department of Agriculture, as mentioned, or just nominating a couple of folks that have some significant capacity and that's a collect city application if there is subsequent grant award.
So Bradley, is this one time for this?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Call one then. Is that, there you are. Commission, that's it.
It is.
So how long does that process take once you split it with the Department of Agriculture?
We'd have to hear back in three months for them reviewing applications. But this new electronic submission, I don't know if it's gonna take them longer or if it's gonna be quicker. We like to think that that's gonna make things go by a little bit quicker. Sometimes it does seem to take a while. On average.
Is that the maximum, the maximum we can ask for?
We did.
It is? Is that because of the size of our city?
That's the maximum grant work through this program?
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The item first?
Anybody?
Or we can handle it, we'll handle this.
Does anybody else have any questions for?
I just have one more.
Yes.
So, so has anybody been out to our area out there to see what roads look like to see if we need to survey?
I'd rather.
So Mickey, let me respond to your question. I sent you an email already. The section of Rock Road that you're talking about is in the county. We've reached out to the county. I talked to the commissioner and asked him what we could do in this area. I just said he's gonna try and give back to me with some information on it. But the Rock Road section that you're talking about is to really want the city to start stepping up and doing it. And those people need to come and petition the council for annexation so that they're generating revenue that can be used in making those repairs.
According to the city map, according to the city maps that are on the website, on the New Fairview website, the city map shows that the vice county portion of Broad Lane isn't within the city limits, Baltimore and stops. The road is already from the county.
We just talked about it a little bit earlier. I was out there last week and I had Josh walk and look at it again this week. We're replacing the sign right there along the operation route. So we'll look at it again, but the section that we went and looked at, that was in the county. So if there's additional sections we'd like us to look at, we can.
First access and then annexate the vice county portion of that road is within the city limits.
Okay.
So do we have any other discussion progress? Not, we have a motion.
I make a motion to. Item I, according to what you.
Do we do what?
There we add and approve this according to what you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve item I. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, so item I passes unanimously. So with that, we're gonna go. At this point, we're going to public hearing to be open, have a public hearing for items B through D. So we're gonna start with B.
And Bradley, he can help him find who's there.
Do you wanna do it individually or do it open at the same time?
Of course. So did you see the open up the public hearing? So we call, open up the public hearing. You wanna reference B through D. So just each item and then call. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna open up the public hearing for items B through D. The time is 7:52. And are we gonna do that each one or just? Okay. So at this point, we'll discuss item B, conduct public hearing to accept public comments and discuss creation of the Shute Ranch Public Improvement District. And so if anyone wants to speak in regards to this item, feel free to come up to the podium.
Well, I think we already spoke, I guess, earlier about it. So, no.
Could you tell them what Public Improvement District is? Because we're not talking about it.
Is it the Shute?
Yeah, it is the Shute Ranch, but this is part of it. It's a part of doing business at the Shute Ranch.
Oh.
So. Please tell.
Yeah, so Public Improvement District is, how best to describe it? It is a, I'm gonna say an entity that can be created over a particular portion of property. And the purpose for that entity is then to be able to fund improvements within that property, public improvements or projects within that property that benefit the property.
It's unique only to that subdivision, not the whole city.
Never mind.
Okay. That's why we need to. So now, does anybody have some comments since we know that it only affects the Shute Ranch subdivision and not the whole city?
So the public discussion or the public hearing, it's open for items B, C, and D. So if y'all wanna come up and talk about the Public Improvement District for Shute Ranch, if y'all wanna talk about the creation of the Shute Ranch Authorized Services Public Improvement District, which is, I guess, that's similar. It's kind of operating maintenance of a second one. And then item D, conduct.
Rezoning.
The rezoning.
That affects.
That affects?
Yeah.
Got it.
The rezoning affects.
First time here, okay?
So that one, that one's.
First time.
Rezoning agriculture and plant development.
Do you want that?
So item D is rezoning that particular property from agriculture to plant development.
So if we already spoke, are you looking for us to speak again?
You can speak again. This is public.
Why not? Why not ask you to speak? I'm just wondering how it's, sorry.
They've already heard the comments, but in a public hearing, anyone has a right to speak. So you wouldn't be turned away if you wanted to make a statement at this time.
Sir, if you haven't had a chance to finish, you can ask. Okay.
Do you want to talk to me? The councilor's still, we're next to. So if they did go through development, can they just get rid of the houses that butt up to my fence?
Can they block?
Get rid of the houses.
Get rid of the houses that butt up to my fence.
That's the gentleman there up there.
Um, there.
In the bush earlier.
Yeah, that's one of them.
So I can have one concern. If I'm looking at our property correctly, would we that fall apart?
I think so.
So what is going to be done to, so that the park isn't just seen as a part of our property? Is there, are there any provisions?
There's no.
Is the Shute Ranch, well, it's, is he here? Is that you?
Yeah, he's there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't see you back there. Are they allowed to ask you?
Generally, that's not the way to make work.
Can we not ask you questions?
So from the standpoint of what it is right now, you have a fence on your property line. So somebody's gonna have to go over your fence in order to be able to access your property. At this point, there is no anticipation. We're not asking developers to do any type of fencing along the repairs, nor do I think that we would really entertain that. We kind of want to have open space, green space, you know, vegetative screening, stuff of that nature, which is what the council's direction has been. So if the council has something that they'd like to see differently there, then we can have a conversation. But that's different from what we've heard.
The way that some in the city, and this being our city administrator, looks at it is that development is coming, whether we like it or not, whether we annex them into the city or not, they can still be. All we can do is look at their plaque and say, you know, maybe make some adjustments or request them, but we can't stop whether they're in or out of the city.
So that's not quite an accurate assessment.
Correct. I don't agree with that at all. My question had on the zone.
Can I ask you, since you haven't spoken, to be able to identify your name and address for the record before you speak?
Oh, I thought you were done.
Well, no, that's okay. If you just wanna speak, we just need you to be identified. If you just say your name and address, I think they're ready to acknowledge you.
I'm Red. Okay, Army Member, 178 Kinderfield Court, New Fairview. The zoning of this property is going from agriculture to development. Is there a different zoning in each section here or is it just one blanket zoning?
So the way the zoning ordinance reads is you're going to have sections that are designed and broken up. So if you look at the development, give it the area, what the town square is going to be. So this right here, this area is required to decide prime later on when they decide to move forward with what the development would look like, which has to be improved. This area right here requires a site of prime. This area right here requires, but the rest of it is being granted, single family residential, which is what the future planning plan, the area is being planned right now as well. This was all anticipated to be single member residential. So according to the city's comprehensive plan, this was all going to end up being single family residential. What we've incorporated into this is a few elements that have some commercial. And in areas where it's going to be an extension and also a city hall, a complex type feature and a public safety feature facility. So speaking to the standpoint of the city council not having any say on this, you know, they came in and made a presentation of what it looks like. This is not look the same as what was presented when they first came in. Following their first presentation, this element was added and introduced to it. Following the next presentation, this element was introduced and added to it. In addition to that, the amenity centers were added into it and they're gonna be dedicated to the city but maintained and paid for by the government. A sports field complex and amenity center is going to be added to it and what you pay for, maintained by the pit, but dedicated to the city. Also, there's a large area up here, which is, you know, we take this into our care. You take this area into our care, it's around 120 acres of park land, which will be dedicated to the city but paid for and maintained by the pit. So it's gonna provide sports field, sports equipment, stuff of that nature goods. And then if you look at this all in red, trails, provides trails. Anywhere that you see on here that ends up with green open space or with a trail system or parks, is going to also be having public access. Anywhere that you see on here that ends up with green open space or with the trail system or parks, is going to also be having public access to it, which means anybody in the community can take that and they can walk through, they can visit any of those areas in the entire development. So the, the city came out and said, hey, if you're coming, you're gonna have an impact. Development is going to occur, much like everybody up here on the council has said. What the city's been able to do is work out a deal with, with the developers and say, well, if you're gonna come, you're gonna have an impact. Well, if you look at South Kingland Road over here, they agreed in their proposal that we were gonna be talking about there tonight, to fund a million and a half dollars of the widening or the expansion of South Kingland Road from the rural side up to the south property or the city limits. They are also agreeing to provide the land for the municipal complex and public safety facility. And then in addition to that, they're saying, we'll add ten million dollars to build or pay for capital equipment and facilities for public safety. Will also add five million dollars to help pay for the cost of the municipal complex and whatever that looks like right there. So when you're talking about the cost, as somebody brought up, they're also putting in place an operating maintenance bid over top of this, which is going to self-assess everybody that lives in this area, an additional fifteen cents per hundred to pay for the streets, to pay for the parks, the trail system, the, you know, the maintenance of the overall development. So it's not going to be something that's going to be impacting the rest of the city from the standpoint of it a tax-based thing. Further, they're talking about making investment, but too, if you look at the chart here, of almost three hundred million dollars for infrastructure improvements related to water, wastewater collection, streets, you know, building major thoroughfares that are going to be connecting, you know, South Kingland Road to twenty-two sixty-four. There's a, there's a huge amount of value that the city has come back and asked for the developers to participate in. I mean, just the, just the check that the, the developers can write is gonna be sixteen and a half million dollars. But when you look at the actual number that they're looking at spending, they're even spending excess of three hundred million dollars on infrastructure in that area. So, you know, the city council, through their direction to me and then our relationship and working back and forth over the last several months, has provided significant value to the city across all of these different areas, whether it was transportation concerns, whether it was emergency medical service concerns. Right now, we don't have a pathway forward to pay for any of that type of stuff. This grants it gives us a big screen board to be able to provide the services that people are talking about.
Want another road to your property, a breach? I mean, that's all.
We can chat about that later with them after the meeting.
Just calling one quick bit, down the hill, sixty, taking down one iron arrow. I was talking about this. I have a good friend of mine, she's a bowler, lives less than one mile from this, on Long Island Road, and she's in her mid-lingeeties, and she asked me how soon this was gonna be there, if she was ready to have a walking trail to walk on and have anything to do. So I, I was just a different aspect of my, and now we remember that she is, she wants the walking trail now. Start walking on Long Island.
Anyone else that wants to speak about this?
There are a couple of course in this plan.
It certainly looks like one, kind of.
It could be done there by the.
Um, so want you to give a turn to close that as well? Okay, so at this point, we're going to close the public hearing portion. Time is eight oh five. And I believe at this point, we're gonna go back into executive session. To, to adjourn to executive session, we need to acknowledge what section we're on, and generally that it looks like often times I'll read both sections, but if you want to, uh, just the introduction, sections. I'm gonna adjourn to the executive session under section five five one oh eight seven, deliberation by economic development negotiations, and then under the, uh, post-session pursuant to section five five one oh eight seven. Oh, they're both the same.
The first three are the same, so.
Oh, yes, yes. So, okay, so I can just say that about five one oh eight seven.
So just A, B, and C.
Those are the only two we're taking right now. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna break to executive session at eight oh six, um, for items A, B, and C, um, following section five five one point eight oh seven. Five five one oh eight seven.
Thank you, sir. There you go.
You think you need to pack. Help pull back there. This is the highest.
And then we could have this area over here, throw a house.
On the door.
Yeah, you can just go in here. Talk about whatever, and it's not asking for it here. It's like, those are the ones that are. And the big residential, which you're here, and then like before you go, you talk about a lot of like. Take the heads out, move them over, and if you're still there, you're talking, talking about.
Yeah, see, what about the shoes, um, four years ago, posted as soon as.
Oh, yeah. Our, our.
Yes.
The East End's twenty-eight minutes of this river. That's sort of the survey of the way. Our survey is a lot of property, but it's fine. So they have six weeks and said, we have a year. Call it service. So it's not that simple, but yours are there. I think so. See, I have no big care attention, and he found it and built that road. Almost all we have is a side road. So I mean, now that we're. My corner. This is what my text actually is, so like, when you're there. All the time, there you go. We got a real lot of them that do here. Really bad here, this red grid has to be on this side of all of those gas roads. And gas, so that's real, this is a critical piece of the. That's probably can't be. It connects north to the south. Oh, but, okay. Well, that, you know, we have this. Yeah, I think with any property, you know, we have a lot of. And we were trying to do a special together, but we're doing a lot of, for, for, anywhere we have, you know, smaller acreage. Because if you flip off, there's no difference.
So, another kind of, so the town was gonna have a, and that's so, that's so. So, for you, that's your, that's your. When we got that, we sent me, and just. So we gotta get, brothers and women, get a double line street in there, so it's tight. There's very, there's a lot of that you know, see. See, what we need to do again, is the climate is taking a screen. That's the fact.
Chris, you might have to tell me.
You think that's, that's, you're actually a lot of that, too, is.
We're gonna be next. Are you guys. Oh, so. You know, I think more of this. But there being. There's a connection to that here, there's a connection. So what we did is we, we made a, we're operating where it is from here. But it's, but it's, there are, there are. Here is in some old man's, where it's, between eleven and everything. The, the, the.
You would.
It's all, it's all a long dash.
You know, there were gases. Soul stripper. Oh, it's there as well, there's such a. And then there's the gas. But I think this guy, it would be interesting, I think, if we went back and, um, to the.
What if, what if, you know, they, they run by the stands? Being the gas, but it's. They have to tend to salvage land. So we can't control that, and they have to be some kind of restriction to control that sense.
Now, I'm not sure if we need the.
There's a lot of, everyone needs gas. Be honest, but you see y'all over there. People in here. Hard to say, I mean, they proposed last year, I can't say, but I can say, I'm just telling you, if this is over. Show, show me, show me a map, show a little square.
Frozen the.
Yeah, keep like the rubber system.
Yeah.
Well, there you go there. Yeah. You get that. Um, we make it, uh, you should have a third house. And then you have. Get drunk. Like I said, we have to get. They call them. Yeah.
You know, Steve, the guy back here, he was building, how they had a factory today, he told you, you know, every four years, first year, nine, so low. The rest, I really wanted to go to this. This is like a, and, uh. I mean, I would get home and, and, and replace them.
He has, well, you know. You have to share.
I do my. I would see a road here. First, you have to. Watching me.
So then they be surrounded on.
Then. They. Oh. 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 I. I. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. Said. He said. There's. Alright. Yeah. Alright. See. I mean. The. Matter. Of. The. Session. I. For. You. Got. That. Yes. Drivers. Second. Yeah. You. Just. Been. Wasn't. You. Do. You. Too. Wait. To. Move. Down. You. Take. This. I. I. Just. Man. I. 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 You. See. That's. Sorry. I. I. So. We. Did. It. She. Had. The. She. Was. Yeah. I. 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 It. It. It's. Like. This. She. Has. I. She. From. Right. Because. She. Wanted. You. Have. You. Know. That's. Yeah. Yeah. That's. Yeah. Yeah. Right. It's. So. Car. I. 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 First. You. Off. One. Now. I'm. I. It's. A. Rich. Yeah. It. Well. We. Do. I. Just. All. This. Yeah. 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 I. 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 Oh. Yeah. I. I. Yeah. That's. Probably. Two. Three. Years. Just. Yeah. Just. Right. That's. Three. Years. You know. Just. Yes. Some. Trash. Track. It takes. A. Time. Which. You. Yeah. Yeah. But. Yeah. So. Obviously. Seven. Chopper. Like. I. It's. Yeah. Almost. Exactly. Same. Size. But. It's. Everybody. Shit. Real. Like. Like. Tom. That's. I could. Split. It's. Story. You. Just. Okay. It's. Long. And. Catch. It's. So. We're. That's. All. Years. It's. Lost. Yeah. It all. Happens. It's. Like. Everyone. People. And. Yeah. Yeah. We're. 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 Yeah. Right. We. 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 You. Know. Yeah. 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 I'm gonna see this. A lot. Of. Yes. I'm gonna say. That. Yeah. I have. A. Ten. Things. Like. You. For. You. Not. A. We. You. Over. Each. At. Those. Two. The. Hands. So. You. They. Have. That. They. Got. Those. Two. Yes. But. They're. 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 Yeah. They. They. It's. Like. You. If. He. There. It's. Already. They're. Right. They're. They're.
So, so, so was large.
Our is good.
Well, I sure would want to help them.
So you should give a seat.
Natural.
All that housing.
I don't think you should.
City Hall to.
And we do.
Bless your brother.
I should write up a new bathroom.
We got it.
Well, it's not very good. It's out there.
Business.
That he sold that. But he sold it to another rent that portion.
So.
Didn't he have the capital or land and you had, you know? Probably called Skyhawk or who did he? Just confused.
Yeah, that's a great thing.
I mean, people just looking over this hat, have a city hall or a house and have an earth and stuff porch. Looking down into the park. You know, and looking over the whole development.
Yeah, like you explained here.
They make a three-story city hall.
Talking about the taxes.
And then actually have nice.
Taxes. This plan, then you put.
Call.
Your after pots of a bigger house. Doesn't pencil out like that one thing it has.
But that is, so that's going to carry your bigger taxes. You all from this.
It makes sense.
I'm a little more sad if you, if you have a policy or some sort of policy.
For the city hall.
Yeah.
She knows. I mean, I've had people. Well, I have people now.
Who?
Then dad's a driver.
It would refer to something kind of. They're, they're, they're listening. Cannot have those, you know, I'm sort of a post.
That's a new story. Before that. Recently.
That's pretty significant.
Yeah.
So we really don't. He said. He said.
I was old.
See that? Thirty thousand dollars. He said, they're not. Seven, so they're gonna have. I don't think he wants to just, that is all, let's say. They're only person. They don't do much. They fly. They're gonna stay a lot.
But I, I shouldn't have.
Well, every thing is just. The crash. I don't know. Every. That's why I said, well, it's free. But I'm not.
Which is, if my friends, that's, you're calling away, that's exactly what changes. We have to make from on. I don't want any. Because I would wait. You have a part. And you can roll my daughter out of the back, with that guy. I was like, oh, with my yard to care and then what's? And then he's.
Oh.
That's many calls. I have five.
That would be a lot of years. That would be.
Handsome.
Well, my first. We want, we like. I'm sorry. Really? Can we start a new plane?
Well. I'm on. Some great. And I mean, in the problem. I don't want her to. Did there go on? I don't know. How to take care of. Yeah, that's.
We really have to deal with. To.
Our cars and, and there's no regulation. So we would need title. And also, she doesn't want to think that's a sign.
So. We add it from all across.
We're not.
We go down and it's. We won't be asked. The way we can. So it's. And they say. Rules. We have a station. We're all, we're all positive about that, actually.
Yeah.
Good. Of course, that been challenging.
I haven't.
Yeah. Well, I want to know. There was some. That was. So. You don't. I guess. There's a, there's a whole. There's something like two.
Yeah. I love that they, they have a name, but they don't pay for it. Driving. They don't report their cars. They're all street wrecking. I don't like it. They have their houses, they're not actually cars. Okay, so. So you have a lot, a lot of streets.
Is she living with us?
Just a little piece.
That was it. Just want to get, get in much real fashion.
I hope so.
Because businesses are probably.
Well, I have a very promising job. My position. Stay far with your. Out there.
Well, I have some interest.
And that was.
Well, but they, I mean, we're, we're having trouble. We have to. I'm. It's a nice town on that. We did there. And like on the one house over there, it's a line system or a home, so it's a personal house. So I mean, we, when we first did it, that. I think we've got six trails in words. Since, um, because I'm thinking about thirty thousand.
How many do you walk around?
And that's why we walk in there. It's not short.
Just.
Yes, you would think that would hold. Now it's. I don't have that. I'm not proud. But nobody.
Well, they're. How? We. There'll be, there'll be different. That's what this family, there'll be. There'll be some trail. Yes. There's. Nice. Tilt away your concrete. Good.
Right.
When you get there, into these areas. A lot of times, you think, you know, you concentrate. They have salt, food, doors, traps, something softer. Same. We just, we just can't leave. Just.
And not, that was a little. Right there.
I'm just. I just. I'm trying to. Just.
Okay, you can't. You must be trying.
You don't have. Oh, well. Well. Seems to be just. And it's. Yeah. Because. But then the map. It's. It's. Of course, this is what can, that'd be a sense there. Before. It's not. Yeah, it's. We have. Yeah, we're good. It's. Are you on? Oh, yes. Yeah. There's. Yeah. It's. It's. That's. I'm tired of everything. It's cold. Yeah, it's so good, right?
Do we turn it down?
Alright, no.
I mean, turn it up?
Fine. Pretty, pretty good.
Section eighty.
Yeah, that's.
Alright, so we're coming back into session at eight thirty seven. And we're gonna continue on with. Item E. Uh, which is a discuss, consider an act on a resolution approving the development agreement between. Capital Investments LLC. Um, and the city of Fairview regarding the development of a parcel of land being. You wanted to develop this? You can say as written. Okay. Item E as written. There you go. That's pretty well. So item E, uh, again, if you, if you look at the packet, the, the documents, thirty, forty pages long, but we're, we're kind of. Giving you the high level, uh, deal points out of the, the development agreement. Um, the creation of this creates two pits. Um. There'll be two actions taken. One is for the infrastructure portion or the capital improvement portion of the pit. And then the second one would be the, um. Authorized services, which is basically the operating and maintenance, uh, portion of the pit. The, uh, infrastructure is going to be surface water, wastewater, stormwater, parks, trails, open space, um, streets. All of that stuff will be used or, or funded through, or a portion of that will be funded through the pit. Uh, and, and also you can speak to this a little bit in a second. Um, they're, they're, they're gonna spend more than what the, uh, the amount of the pit will fund, uh, just simply because there's more infrastructure costs that they can actually pull out through the, the pit. Um, in addition to that, they've agreed to developers' contributions to the city for sixteen point five million dollars. The sixteen point five million dollars is broken down to ten million dollars for public safety, uh, capital purchases. Uh, five million dollars for municipal complex facility. And then a million and a half dollars for the improvement to South County Line Road to expand it from a two-lane road to a four-lane separated, uh, road to the southernmost point of the city limits. Um, the operating and maintenance pit is basically set up where it's going to assess up to fifteen cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. Um, which will be used to maintain the infrastructure that the pit is going to be putting in. The, uh. Initially, the surface water and wastewater is going to help subsidize the cost of operations. Um, the developer is going to come out of their own pocket to cover any shortfalls that may be there. And then that operating maintenance pit in the right payers will be able to repay the developer over time. The, uh. Operating maintenance pit will also be looking at covering the maintenance for the parks, trails, open space, um, the. Parks and the open space and amenity centers that are being dedicated to the city. It will still be maintained by the, the, the pit and the H O A. And then finally, the public access easement will provide access to anybody in the community to any of those areas that are identified as parks, trails, or open space on the concept plan.
That's, that's all of this development agreement?
That's all of this development agreement.
So E and F aren't related to each other?
So. E is the, uh, resolution approving the development agreements. S is the zoning. So if you approve the development agreements, it's anticipating that you're going to approve the zoning application in order for them to be able to go out and actually do what they said they were going to do in the development agreement.
Okay, I make a motion, we, we approve item B as written.
I second.
I have a motion in a second. To approve item E, all in favor?
Uh.
All both? Okay, item E passes unanimously. Along to item F, discuss, consider an act and, and ordinance, and then the zoning map of the city of Fairview by changing the zoning destination of this parcel of land. From agriculture to plant development. Does the council have any questions regarding this? This is the same concept plan zoning that we, we talked about.
All over.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You don't have any additional questions? We, we can pick questions. We've got people here if you want to ask, but, um, we've gone over this a fair amount.
I do have one small question. Somebody asked me right there on, on, on the road where it's. May I?
Yeah.
Sorry. The purpose of today's one swap. What is this gonna be right there? Somebody wants to know. So this is, what is this, a city or?
It, it's a retail area. You call it the F M four oh seven.
Because they said, they said that. You guys would be able to see the.
This is the mass, this is the illustration of what they.
How, how big area is that, 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 that?
So we would be able to see this front, it's not, somebody said there's gonna be a burn and you need to go to the country, you're not gonna be able to see all this from. Clearly, that's not.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see it to a certain degree, but.
That's right at the front of four oh seven?
Yeah, there's gonna be substantial vegetation screening.
How big is that?
A monument.
What was that?
The biggest. What, what is it, just, what is the main road gonna be called that goes north and south from four oh seven? Oh, you know, you have named it?
Sure.
I, I.
So you'll be able to see that go from four oh seven, that's not.
The retail, you live in on that.
It's what?
The retail portion, you'll be able to see like those depicted in there.
Retail, not, not commercial, industrial.
Right.
There could be some office in there, but not the insurance guy in there.
Well, that's.
Stuff like that. I mean, neighborhood services. It's, it's typically what go, retail center like that. We, we did these renderings so that you could see that from four oh seven, because there's a ridge just to the north of four oh seven. You'll see the retail and the entry, and then everything else goes off that bridge line into the Oliver Creek town area.
If you guys look at this.
Four oh seven.
You can see what the line looks like, looks like right there.
So that area where, where it says retail though, you'll be able to access that from four oh seven and see it.
Yes.
So Walmart here. So Larry, what are you here for?
Well, the future language plan shows this commercial off of four oh seven. So they're following the future language plan. So with the commercial on that frontage and the rest of it, it was shown as residential. So it complies.
Gentlemen, is your, your, gentlemen, is your language commercial?
The city council never really voted on if they were gonna have a thousand feet from four oh seven as.
Oh, we, we did. Years ago.
Yeah, I think maybe six hundred.
Well, you, basically.
It's supposed to be.
Frontage on four oh seven is future language is considered.
Commercial. No, if nobody else has any questions, I make a motion. I, I make a motion. We accept, uh, item F as written. I second.
I think we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Uh.
All vote? Okay, so item F passes unanimously. Go on to item G. Discuss, consider an act on a resolution authorizing the creation of a chief branch public improvement district number one in accordance with check three seventy-two of the Texas local government code.
Am I allowed to ask the questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I just have a quick question. What they were, what they were talking about earlier about, um, the, the, um. Lights being, you know, with these people that do live out there. And Ben, Ben had discussed certain type of lights where it's gonna minimize that a little bit. Is that what's gonna be happening in your development or just in certain portions or? I guess my question is, is there any way to accommodate the people who have been here so long who are petrified of this ruining their way of life?
You all, they're all native on us that we're involved with. We adopt, it's called a dark sky lighting policy. And, uh, and there are standards for that. You can go all the way and see how it works, but.
So they will.
It's using shielded light and lower, um, light poles and using a, uh, I mean, and I forget the terminology, but they're, they're L E D lights, but they're softer L E D lights. So you still get that kind of yellow.
The way light is. Like.
Yeah.
So, so you're.
I forget the technology behind that, but it, it gives a real soft and, uh, low light effect. And it doesn't spill over in, into other people's property.
Okay.
That's the whole of this law.
Okay. And I guess then the way where your house is, I, and I'm guilty of not driving out there and so I haven't, I don't, I've seen some of it, but not enough of it. But I'm just trying to, like you said, take into consideration the people that have been there. I'm sure you understand.
Yeah, we're, we're doing the same thing. Uh, generator lab drip wall over the ranch and looked at all the edge conditions to see what can we do here, what can we do there? And we'll continue to do that necessarily, find, uh, even as we start developing. And we'll be looking at, you know, views and, and, you know, there's a lot of topography on this property. It's really surprising until you get out there. It's not a flat piece of land. So there's a lot of opportunities to tuck things into, you know, it behind a little hill to hide it a little bit.
I mean, I appreciate what you guys are all doing for our little city and everything. I just, you know, I feel bad for the, for the families that are worried.
Except for the tiny lots.
Look, I'm gonna add to it, something we haven't really talked about to the group, we've talked about it to individuals that have come up and asked us questions. Where there are smaller lots, we have voluntarily put a twenty-foot buffer in there for an extra landscape screen.
Okay.
Help soften that.
What, what do you say twenty-foot buffer, a setback on?
Yes, from the building and from the back of the yard. So it gives an extra twenty-foot, uh, landscape buffer between those lots and the new lots. To help.
And then to answer what, what Wendy Al had brought up about, um, the price of your homes, I, I guess I must admit that, but you, you don't have this two hundred thousand.
Twenty, twenty down and actually the city makes more money off of having more houses.
That's what I thought too.
Bigger houses where you can pay less.
Right.
Well, Rebecca, I thought Rebecca could be here through all those discussions and there was never any discussion about any cheap houses. And I don't consider a three hundred thousand dollar house cheap.
I don't either.
Marty, I.
So, but that's not, that's not a challenge. It's not.
Did you have conversations with the gentleman that has the fifty-one acres that you surround?
Yes.
Ben said he was all positive about it until tonight. So what, what happened?
Or coming so he could, yeah, do more riding lessons.
Do you guys know what happened, how that went south so fast or is there something we're missing?
No, he wants us to sell him those lots, um, and sell them all the lots that are around his.
We're, we're kind of confused on what his proposal is.
Okay. Because we are too.
Wants to sell us his land and he wants to buy ours, so I'm not sure which is. But, uh, so I think, uh, once they discover what they want to do, we, we just have to totally make a proposal. You know, is, is there something you want to offer or try to work out or certainly wants to look at?
That area of the development has a very narrow bottleneck because of the gas wells, so it's really hard for us to accommodate a whole lot in through there. Or we can't afford to build a street that connects all the different, uh, more south. Because it's very narrow. I see anything.
It's hard to find.
Yeah, that little narrow spot right there, we would want to construct a street in there and have money to pay for that and give up all those lots. Who understands what those lots are value now?
Oh, yeah.
A acre, it's worth value with the house line and the tax value it does to everything in the pit. So it's not as simple as it might seem.
No, I understand.
So looking at items G and, and H, I'm.
Thank you for explaining it. Take any time.
They, they both say.
So one of them is for the, the capital construction pit. And then one of them is for the authorized services, which is the operating maintenance pit.
Okay, G says, uh, create a chief branch P I D.
Really, the only difference is on the second sentence on H is authorized services. And that's a defining term in the documents.
Authorized services. So I make a motion, if nobody has any further discussion, I make a motion, we, uh, approve item G as.
I second. Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All vote? Thanks to item G, passes unanimously. On to item H, uh, discuss, consider an act on a resolution authorizing the creation of a chief branch authorized services public improvement district number one in accordance with check three seventy-two of the Texas local government code.
Since the only difference is the authorized services, I make a motion to approve this as written.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
All both?
You gotta breathe.
Okay, so item H passes unanimously.
Coffee is gifted.
Already gone over item F, so we're gonna skip over to J. Discuss, consider an act on a resolution of the city council of the city of Fairview, Texas, appointing a judge Hobbs as the city of Fairview municipal court judge and approving contract and services approval.
Judge Hobbs doesn't have a first name?
It's on Hobbs. It's Tom, but it's.
It's Hobbs, not Hobbs?
He, uh, he, he works, actually, I, I think he, he's been on for a long time, but he's the, uh, the municipal court judge for Justin and for the city of Northlake.
Uh. Is it Derek Harris?
Well, he's municipal court, so there is no, uh.
So this, this is not his name, can we?
This is his name. You can say Hobbs, but that's, that's his full name. When we talked about it, this is how he, uh. He, he, he looked at the agreement and, and, and approved it when we, when we gave him.
He has been at Northlake and Justin for twenty-nine years.
Exactly. Yeah.
That's a long time.
Who, who did, uh, did my next money for a while?
Yes.
Boy, yeah.
Yeah, so he actually retired from the city of Fort Worth. Um, I don't know exactly how long ago, several years ago. And, uh, we've recently received a disciplinary notification from the bar regarding him keeping up his continuing education requirements. And we've been asking him to supply that to us and he had not been, uh, compliant. And so when we reached out in the last time, we attached a letter that we received for disciplinary action and he said, I just been resigned, I don't have time to, to do all this. Um, but he had not been responsive prior, so we'd already reached out to, to judge Hobbs to find out if he had been here stood and, and working with the city of Fairview. And he agreed to step into the role and, uh, basically keep the same terms of the agreement that we had previously, so it'll be a budget neutral, um, transition. And we'll actually have somebody that's local, uh, currently the guys retired for San Antonio. So if we try and hold courts, it, it becomes an issue to try and get him up here and do that. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a win-win for us and also for, for judge Hobbs.
So, so on E and, uh, Bradley, this, this is legal? It just says judge Hobbs, it didn't say, it doesn't have to say who he is, I mean, he can't be the only officer out there.
So if you look at the packet, it has the agreement in the packet, the agreement in the packet defines who he is, it has the, uh, the guy's name, it has his address, all the information that you could possibly want. I, I think it, I believe it provides very notice of what you're doing and what you're considering tonight. It doesn't bother me to take action.
And I will say this for the other judge. He was a Vietnam vet during the sixties, during the sixties. And then he has been a judge in Northside and Fort Worth and he's used to be extremely involved with all the Hispanic communities of Northside.
Can you say his name?
I can't remember his, but I can't, I can't recognize, um, I, I can get his information, I don't, I don't have. I've never met.
I was raised in, in the Northside.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, you probably would have run into him.
Yeah.
Still, under good circumstances.
Bob, making.
Okay. So we have, uh. We have a motion for item J.
I make a motion, we accept item J as written.
I second.
I second. We have a motion for a judge. Second and a third, uh, all in favor?
Uh.
All vote? And item J passes unanimously. And at this point, I believe we are going to go back into, um, executive session to.
We, we can't do, uh, both these about, uh. The city of New. Okay.
So we're gonna.
So, so there's nothing else left except executive session, is that correct?
Executive session and then items P and L. So we're gonna go into executive session.
Why can't we do K and L, or they?
We, we can, but we have to, we're gonna do the executive session first to discuss, to make sure you guys are comfortable with the, uh, the agreement with that line and then we can come out and take that. We're gonna, um, go to executive session. Session pursuant to section five five one and zero seven one. On some way. And also, item E. Pursuant to section. And, um, is eight fifty-seven.
Oh, okay.
First one, first mail.
Kind of like getting off air. Alright, when do I get that? When do I move forward? That you want to fly. Eric. I have some hair questions. Since where? Probably about two thousand. Thank you very much. Thank you. You're acting very good. I'm doing all the roads. Thank you. I appreciate you. It's going great. Yeah. John? I asked, whatever you want. You got something on there? I don't know. They don't know. This is. On that road. Didn't that get this? I got a boss, I got a boss. So. Now I have to watch out. I'm gonna go work. Wow, it's gonna be big. This is the best gathering.[1675.04] Yes.
Oh, thank you. Oh, oh my God. I'll tell you.
He comes down.
Number one, number one on the road. All the people, the trucks, construction workers. They're all in ties.
Well, see, we've got some. He's a nice guy.
Yeah.
So he's in two years.
Two years of fast as he could possibly.
So I will probably look at first instruction and where the structure might bring you.
You know, as fast as we can, it's, it's, it's.
Getting harder.
It's hard to be soon.
And they have commitments for monitoring everything just for those initial two phases. If they have. But that's, you know. But that's part, nothing past that. No, all the, all the.
Such a meeting now.
They committed that far.
I've been recording.
Oh, sorry.
Congratulations. There probably been more celebration reasons, but it's.
Drive.
Drive, but. Probably more than that.
I know, somebody asked me how long in their house over there, but the guy's too smart to move us up there.
You don't know this location.
It's random.
He married her.
Okay.
It's pretty bad in here.
Yeah.
There's water in that right there. This energy doesn't control what you use. This energy used to control it, so we have that postponed.
Oh, yeah.
They, they, uh, gas would drive it. So they don't.
Hostile.
Go get some.
Ugly thing here somewhere. So it's a test. No reason to keep the water.
Oh, it's gas.
Yeah, I think eventually it's just another girl for gas feeling. All right, guys.
Thank you for sharing.
In cash or toll? In cash or toll? So little bit of housing. The problem is going to be community, well, they got half. So I got a hundred and.
House.
All kinds of business, uh, I know it's. Like I said, when I was, when I worked at Icarus, I managed the first one in history, everything with the parks for seventeen locations and I made a lot more money than that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna be kidding you, so. All the way down, all city area, two thousand, which is just as fast. And if I don't make it come back down. Those are good. Sad.
See, I'm hot. Can hear the birds.
Yeah. Cause I don't think I'm gonna be able to do it like this.
I just know how long it's been over there, so I'll straighten it out. Today's the day of the dawn, because it's a little. I think that I have been. Especially at schools.
I already just got my phone. I wonder if this is five years.
I've been wrong to ask this time because, because it's not on the paper now, being on the paper now, it's a true goal, they're very good.
What's it, the TMS, someone's city?
We're still in the.
Yes.
Two months and five months.
Let's hit the TMS, someone's city.
We're still in the.
Yeah, everybody on the tax. And.
Even though they meant it's four lines, they're still, they're still hopping to us. Actually, they even had a name for schools.
There's, the problem with the lines is, it's a free force of the inventory tax. That's, that's what I'm on it, the inventory.
Now, we go, you know, building all our place work, so we have some of that, but probably. Is it, is it short?
You should say that's a issue, because it's a. Probably.
It's all over, it's been, it's been there, it's been there, it's been towards, I wish forty-five thousand. Undeveloped lines. It's just.
Life, unfortunately, there's thirty-seven thousand, I love that.
Yeah. Two thousand. Just. There's so much.
That's crazy. Fifty-seven, put five houses together, they're gonna have a school. If twenty-twenty, we got three schools around the block.
It's, it's actually very, very, actually, it's eighty-five minutes. We probably, we probably, the gals, this girl's on the level of us, it's like a basic issue for the, who didn't. The property, um, didn't last, this, this. We should learn, um, the, it's different. You're a gentleman, it's still a good job, and we're just, I'm very, it's all the cost personally.
Yeah, that's all. That fish trap rolling on the streets. There you go, the cross street, there you go, there you go, the dent, oh, rock age, all three houses.
School just, school. We live, I live in a. One schoolhouse. It's twenty-five miles from my doorstep, it's school, and I call it the old, here's seven miles away, and eight, one, seven miles there.
Cause they never change, they never change boundaries, but like, schools, school boundaries, there's everything to dirt in Texas, because it's somewhat schools, that, so, and they need to change several. We really, we really should, we should have, we should have added it, why everybody was, we're still asking. And then we went down that street. And. Straight, uh, they got, the street was on Kenny, the next street was half Kenny on one side and the first, like, I did some land swaps in there, but, uh, most of the, I think, I think I keep it every, first of all. Down the street. It was ridiculous, I was, in the morning, we got buses running, everyone, everybody parks the street, we get a Kenny bus, a Frisco bus.
It's. See, but, and, um, I want to learn stories, but in the morning, in the same period, we passed, the Cal State Valley, the Polycom, so this is all the same original. Because we, we must destroy the returns numbers, we have. We have our, the G units, or the common code, the G units, it's still a issue, Polycom is trying to do.
Yeah.
Not to be too. We have to treat the.
I wish I could.
While we're. What's happening, but she did it, it's once you're ready, and what you need is. What's it happen?
And it's really keen, was every seven twenty. Or a corner, a king, or more or something. So we were on the corner, south side of the corner, was still a king, school bus, it city, was out of school district. Between there and to one-twenty-one, a bicycle field, that tracks, real control, places, that's all that's in that, school district, the city of King. And same King, they're in there, and they're at that intersection, and all of them, on, uh, Ridge, two-one-twenty-one, back at, on tracks, uh, they put in, approved, forty-four complexes of second to God. And then on the other side, our name, the little west side, approved there, so the city of King, so they went all the, this is Frisco last day, city out of that last day, I'm symbol city of King before. Cause they approved all the section they had, we, we came in, and out of that first, the school district, it under there. It is crazy, the boundary, like, where the solution, I didn't have this in the king, so if you go straight west, that's, uh, the, the road there is, the corners of, of the, is the school district, so one-twenty-one comes down, uh, Harden, uh, New Stadium, so, oh, you should be after seven-twenty, that's all, it's out of there, it's out of that speed, that last speed is fifty foot, but, yeah, fifty yards from the New King Stadium. All thanks to the King, it's where the stadium is, uh, took the GMC, two carload of shoes, totally eleven and all that, that's in the King, school district, the stadium is a school district, everybody else, the twenty-one, twenty-one, that was all out of that.
Say, the first thing, it's just, it stretches all the way out and hidden down.
Yeah.
Yes, I see. Always there, it's, it's a real question, they were, and they were doing, and they were, this, this session, or all sections session, I second you. Open the whole stadium, turn your. So two years, we can fly. Two, that's. So two, three, five, that's.
Yeah, cause I wish it could come from the tank.
There's a magic down, it's just. Along this whole part of the district. He hasn't been to.
I think so, that's, how many, so, if they do four, I need to crash, so we can build it, so I can recover the four, so I can retire, and I don't need to wait another, obviously, seven or four years to crash, and then, I need to crash, and be on the uptick side before I have to lose three.
And now, sad, I was looking at it again, so then two, four years. Pretty impressive.
It's a good one.
Yeah.
You say, yeah. Yeah.
I was on the decision. I'll take off, so I can sail and move out, but I know that, I gotta ride all the way up to New York. Well, I don't want to be moving, it's starting to open in the sixties.
You're jacked, so I'm hanging on.
No.
I think the divine mind, just some of those.
He's still, uh, because of his harassment, he walked this, when he's up there, he's bringing himself, he walked originally with his mom and stepdad as partners, because his stepdad had leased it, I don't have one reason for everything, and then they, uh, the man died and he couldn't live himself, and they paid like three hundred something dollars a acre for it. That, well, this man, you know, that's not, no, well, this man, just the money, you can't, just buy it. So they bought it, and then he's, you know, bought his parents out over the time, and now, since paid for, and he turned down forty-five, I don't think. I'm almost, I'm almost getting, it's all the kids now, eighteen, I don't have any child support, and so I just, of us, like, the gash is going. Yeah. It's on South Texas, it's not one of the home, that's, it don't be a home, that's.
You can hear the crowds, you can hear the, produce that owner, not that we have any owners, you can put it south, and all that, I mean.
Jerry, that in the business.
Um, it's three sides of this. I don't know what I'm gonna do. It's happening, I think they like it.
And it keeps him, he's out there. And they're looking at our lives, and there's no, our lives out there for them. But it's his, it's his pay.
And also. Not even good. You might be possible, you're just a leader. Actually, they need someone, they want them.
Yeah. Yeah. He's got all office of that.
No, he's got her best.
First of all, I'm doing this, I'm not saying. Everything we bought had to come from the office of. We couldn't buy anything anywhere else. Uh, cause James, they don't do friends, it's like we had to avoid. Anything that's had come from, uh, the hardware. We were not, we were not allowed to go to loans, they had, they had come from Jickers or whatever. No, I don't buy anything in my mind. And the vehicle had to get up to James with that. And I'm a lot of so happy to take the Cadillac dealership that. Didn't because he, she was never allowed to drive a Cadillac because James was not selling. That's our first Cadillac. She's always built an awesome. So you got Cadillac, uh, and we'll take Cadillac. Now with all the man, that hidden every time he does this, he's in the world, he, he got a new pickup every year. Except for the elderly to the, the leadership for the older, which is the solid. He got it in year three. The store will get it. Or we get every other one, store got one the next year, but very few. We find them. We have, we have the pickup every other year. We're getting one every year. Yeah, it's part of that.
...about ten and a half, three percent. So they're gonna relax it down. Actually about everything. How does the cost of that two and a half million? It'll max out. About a good acquisition will max out. About three or four vision. I'll leave you with this. You know, about hundred fifty, our best one's about a hundred fifty. They're gonna do this like, I call it like, I call it three hundred. I have something about forty three thousand, three, I don't know where it is. Maxing out, give them the option of, I mean.
Yeah. Nice.
Yeah. About five million. Yeah.
That was two of them. He took the job in the office. And then, and then he goes to the office, like, chartering community. That's all. He's like, we're gonna couple pretty good business. Yeah, that's a good business.
It just means, like, if I have a lot of names, but they don't could buy about that. You ever, you ever go down that road?
I would too.
Yes.
Yeah.
And San Francisco, you got my actual rock point.
San Francisco, you know, that's, that's where I came from. And that's where I went and actually played with the picture, with the song, and most of the time.
My granddad's, I think, very available, I believe. There's, uh, all. We may want to do that. Is this? You know, yeah, I don't know why I would. Uh, all that, I heard very good stuff. I like, I like doing, uh, moving house. People base their, you know, some, or, or anything. Yeah, live house on my house, I'm asking. Not a drifter, uh, that. Uh, dogs, mother, sister, whatever, always be happy. Yeah, all this usually. There is a, there is where, well, usually. Like, the building. And, um, it's so good, it's all this place originally, this place up. He sold it, he built it, and he built the house, yeah. Yeah, very, very cool.
So this is John. One family, is it?
Yes, this is all, I'm going to get this. Jack had me on, 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 over. Uh, you. He was a head. When, when I, I did, thirty years. Yeah. I don't know what he did, but, yeah. He just, he, he, I only got paid, so.
So Hawk Ridge, that's, that's, you know, Park, you want, you know.